Would you please rise for the pledge? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We thank you for bearing the elements this evening and joining with us on this beautiful night in northwest Ohio. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Yes.
Zinfardino.
Here.
The minutes of the meetings that were held on December 28th, 2017, and January 2nd, 2018 were presented to council prior to this meeting. I will ask first if there are any additions or corrections to the minutes for the December 28th meeting. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the minutes of the December 28th meeting are approved. And finally, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the January 2nd, 2018 meeting? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have any correspondence this evening?
Um, yes. A receipt from Finance Director and distributed to you prior to the meeting was the Financial Budget Summary Report for the month of November 2017, and then also the budget transfers for the month of January that need your approval, please.
Thank you, Kay. Is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the budget transfers are approved as presented.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. Mr. Mayor, do we have any special recognitions this evening? Thank you. Kay, do we have anyone who has registered or signed up for lobby visitation this evening?
Uh, yes, we have one person, um, Julia Botts.
If you would, uh, please, no, no, you're fine, I'm sorry. You would just please approach the microphone and clearly state your name and address for the record.
My name is Julia Botts, uh, 140 and a half, Mandville Avenue. Um, hi, my name's Julia, I'm on here on behalf of, uh, the Environmental Action Group at BGSU. Um, I'm a senior biology major with a minor in environmental education. Um, so the Environmental Action Group has been working on a couple of initiatives for this upcoming semester, um, on campus, so things like sustainable waste reforms, composting, and other, uh, efforts focused within the university. We're interested in extending, um, some of those efforts outside of the university and working with the city. So, um, as it's obvious to you, the city of Bowling Green values green alternatives, uh, for energy and sustainability. BG's status as a green Ohio friendly city, um, will be enhanced by some of the following ideas that we have. So recycling on the main streets, restricting use of styrofoam, and, um, lastly, kind of larger, uh, goal that encompasses multiple things might be to incentivize, uh, green businesses to recycle, use less plastic, um, have access to electric car charging stations, restaurants might have in-house composting, restaurants and stores have recycling accessible to customers and employees, restaurants and stores could have, um, certain portion of their power generated through renewable sources, as a lot of them already do. Um, restaurants, stores, and bars can refuse to use styrofoam, plastic bags, or other use, um, single-use items made out of plastic. And, um, so our kind of idea was that if the businesses, stores, bars, restaurants meet a certain minimum number of these aspects, they can be, uh, green BG business. So it might, um, increase competition between businesses, increase revenue per businesses, um, just like, obviously, our consumers care a lot about what goes into the businesses around here, and we care a lot about them, but we also want to care about the environment. So, um, it's kind of a way to do both. So, basically, um, this program would likely in- involve the cooperation of Public Works, Utilities, Economic Planning and Development. That's why we're speaking at council today. So we're seeking help, um, so that we'll have effective planning and to identify the important next steps in getting these initiatives going. We're looking for any input from city on that.
Well, thank you, Julia. Julie, I do appreciate you coming this evening and appreciate, um, your efforts. My suggestion as a starting point would be for you to perhaps, um, reach out to our, um, uh, Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter. I'm sure that she would be open to the idea of sitting down with you and listening to your ideas and maybe discussing ways that, uh, the city could help to cooperate with your efforts. Thank you very much. Do we have Kay?
That's it.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on to our official reports, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. Uh, I just want to start by, uh, expressing our sympathies to, uh, to Mike and Terry Marsh on the loss of, uh, uh, Mike, your mother-in-law, and, uh, her passing, and I know it's, uh, probably been a tough couple of days for you and Terry and the whole family, so... And, uh, so we express our, our sympathies and offer our condolences to you and the, and the family. I'm going to digress just for a moment because I want to pick up on Julia's, uh, comments there. Um, the, uh, the action, uh, the university action council, the BGSU Action Council for Environment, uh, that I prob- environmental action group, okay. I know I messed it up there in some way on that, so forgive me, but, um, you're, you're really accomplishing some amazing things on campus, and I hope in addition to some things, it's ideas you might share with the city, that perhaps from time to time you might, uh, give us a report uh, on some of the things that you're doing on the campus, because some of the, the statistics are, are pretty, I find, pretty amazing. And, uh, I happen to, you know, pick up on a little bit of it because of your, uh, your coordinator for sustainability on, on, on campus, and, uh, so I get to hear some of his reports from time to time, but I think it might be good for, you know, every so often to, uh, when you have, uh, some updates, uh, I think it'd be worth sharing with, 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 with the broader public, if I could put it that way. I know you have some reports on, on campus to faculty senate and other groups, uh, student government and so forth, but, um, uh, perhaps you might just consider sharing some of that, uh, with us here as well. It is unfortunate and very disappointing that weather conditions forced the cancellation of the annual Martin Luther King Junior Tribute. The Human Relations Commission chaired by the Reverend Mary Jane Saunders will be considering an alternative date at the commission's next meeting on Friday, February 2nd. We are eager to hear from the famed Tuskegee Airmen, Dr. Harold Brown, um, and, uh, and to award the annual Drum Major for Peace Award, and I hope it will be possible to arrange use of the Performing Arts Center once again for the benefit of our students and to accommodate the general public. I hope the public food drive was a success, and I want to thank you, Bruce Jeffers, and, uh, I don't know how many people you had working with you, with some, I saw some folks from the campus, from the community, and, um, and, and, uh, it was very cold when you came to our doorstep, and, uh, but I just want to commend you all for, uh, uh, making the rounds of the community and trying to gather food for, uh, this is an important annual event, and, uh, we appreciate and applaud what you, what you do. The annual MLK Junior Day of Service event on campus yesterday was, again, a hugely successful event with more than 800 students participating. I joined with them for the closing ceremony, and it was refreshing to hear, uh, about some of the many projects undertaken locally, including the construction of 13 mini library boxes, which will be placed throughout, uh, our community, including the Bowling Green Community Center and the special, and also a special initiative with La Conexión and numerous others involving BG and a number of communities throughout the region. In fact, I saw a number of buses going out to places like Napoleon, I believe, Defiance, Toledo, and so forth. And it was really something to see them all coming back in yesterday and then regathering there at the, uh, in, in the ballroom of the, uh, University Union. Uh, congratulations to Hannah Affinity and the other civic action leaders associated with the BGSU Center for, uh, Community and Civic Engagement. Hannah also happens to be the editor-in-chief of the BG News, so she's doing, working on overdive or overdrive, I'm not sure, but, uh, she did a masterful job in, in handling, uh, and coordinating all those events, uh, yesterday. Uh, the BG Curling Club celebrated their 50th anniversary over the weekend with a bond spiel that brought in visitors from Ontario, Cleveland, Indianapolis, Detroit, and many participants and guests from throughout the, the region. Uh, I thought I had the pin with me, but in any event, trust me, I got a pin. It's, it's an amazing, uh, story and history and how their, how their new place is really working out beautifully. I met last week with interim BGSU President, Dr. Rodney Rogers, who assured me, uh, that the various projects and initiatives involving both the city and the university would continue as planned despite the retirement of now-President Emeritus, Dr. Mary Ellen Maisy. We also reaffirmed understandings about those all-important lines of communication between the city and the university. You have an important annual council planning session on Saturday beginning in these chambers at 9:00 a.m., and my time with you will be somewhat abbreviated because of a memorial service for Dr. John Piper, a longtime member of the BGSU faculty and golf coach, and a friend and neighbor, as his neighbor of Sandy's as well, for many years. Uh, as you contemplate various planning-related issues and community needs, I know you will be cognizant that the year 2018 will be an unusually demanding one for BG's city government. In addition to the formation of a charter review commission, um, and I might say that President Osbacher and I, along with Municipal Administrator Tretter, will be sharing our recommendations with you at the, uh, next meeting. Uh, we will be formally launching the Worcester Green Public Campaign with the construction of a gazebo in late April, early May, and parenthetically again, I'll say already to date, more than $230,000 has been committed or pledged. I know that the Community Action Neighborhood Revitalization Plan will be high on your agenda, and of course, the East Worcester Street Corridor Project will be taking shape in concert with the university, as well as the beginning of construction on the initial stages of the I-75 roundabouts. From all reports to date, we have every reason to believe that the economic growth and robust economic climate experienced by the city will continue in 2018. On January 23rd, Administrator Tretter and I will be joining with Economic Development Director Sue Clark, who happens to be here this evening, sitting back there, uh, for our annual visitations, uh, with owners, plant managers, and others associated with our industrial, corporate, business community to discuss outlooks and needs. Our first stop, right Sue, will be Southeastern Container on Industrial Parkway, I believe, that's our number-one place we go, and already a number of those visitations have, have been taking, uh, have been lined up, so... We appreciate Sue, all of your good work, and, uh, it's always an interesting experience, an eye-opening experience, and frankly, a very reassuring experience that when we make our rounds each and every year. We've, uh, we've typically, we don't want to get spoiled with good news, but, uh, and take things for granted, but we have to keep working away. As a reminder, the Toledo Metropolitan Council of Governments, better known as TECOG Annual Assembly Meeting will take place in Perrysburg on Monday, January 29th. Please let Administrator Tretter know if you plan to attend. I find this day-long, well, it's not really, I shouldn't say a day-long session, it usually, uh, ends about 2:00 o'clock, but it starts at 8:00 o'clock in the, in the morning with some caucuses, uh, and, uh, some other sessions and that. Usually, I think the caucuses start really at 9:00 o'clock, uh, they have some, uh, a meeting starting at 8:00 o'clock with some of the newer members of, of TECOG, uh, but, uh, I, I find our sessions, especially when we break down on a city caucus, you can be, uh, relating to, interacting with, learning from, uh, some of your counterparts, uh, in the other, uh, cities and, and towns, uh, well, I should say cities, because it's strictly city, the villages, the counties, uh, all have their separate, uh, caucuses as well. So that's why the city caucus is always, I think, rather informative, and, um, uh, at least I've found each and every year that I, I, I attend, because you can compare notes on what's happening throughout the region. Uh, we had our first chamber-sponsored ribbon, ribbon-cutting of, of the year last Thursday at the State Bank's grand opening on North Main Street, and the second one is set for this Thursday at 1:30 at the new, and this is a kind of an intriguing title here. Uh, I had to pick up on it, double-check it, Radio Hospital Verizon Wireless on North Main. There's a hospital for wireless, people like myself that don't know what the heck's going on with the, with the, get frustrated with your, your thing, your handheld device there and that, but in any event, there's a new hospital there that'll take care of all this. Uh, it's the 14th location in northwest Ohio, and as I said, it'll be on North Main Street, and, uh, the event will take place this coming Thursday at 1:30. And in case you're counting, there were 30 ribbon-cutting ceremonies in 2017, that's a new record, and, uh, those represent either brand spanking brand-new businesses, or businesses that have taken on a whole new chapter in their, 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 their life and, uh, and adding new services and so forth. So it's, it's really kind of one of those good-news things, and most days, the scissors work rather well. We've had a few little malfunctions, but, uh, usually it's because someone else comes up with another piece of ribbon, so... As a final note, or as we like to say in journalistic terms, we will be adding a 30 to the long and distinguished career of our very able and thoroughly professional fire chief, Tom Sanderson, on January 24th at the Simpson Building. And Tom, uh, a lot of us are, we're looking forward to being with you on that day, and, uh, anything I would attempt to say would be, you know, inadequate, uh, because you have, uh, just done a superior job as a firefighter and, and, uh, a paramedic. We've learned a lot from you, and you've been very, very committed to the, uh, to the city of Bowling Green, and your services will be terribly missed. We will be swearing in your, uh, your successor here, um, Bill, um, on February s- 5th. Right, I think I've got that first Monday there, right Lori? But in any event, congratulations, Tom, and I know Lori will be adding some special words as well, but we look forward to joining with you, uh, on the 20, uh, on the 24th at the Simpson, uh, building. Uh, Mr. President, members of council, this concludes my report unless you have questions for me. And I want to wish you all a very, I don't think it's too late to say a very Happy New Year, so, even though we're well into 2018.
Are there questions for Mayor Edwards?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
Good evening. Well, we've certainly had, uh, a lot of snow since last, uh, we, we met, um, even since your last official meeting, so our Public Works crews have been out working very hard, uh, to encourage a safe environment here in the city, and we thank them for their great service. But we want to remind citizens that there is all, there are also things that they can do to help promote that safe environment in the city. Anytime that there's snow, we really appreciate cars being removed from the streets. Now, it becomes mandatory when we hit two inches and there are designated snow streets, they are marked with a blue and white sign. People can also go to the website and find a listing of those designated snow streets, so that's a requirement. Uh, but again, any cars that can be removed from the street will help everyone in the long run, because we can do a much better job of, of clearing. And if you think about ambulances and police officers and other utilities folks needing to get through, those clear streets are very important. Citizens are also required to clean their sidewalks within 24 hours after the abatement of the storm. And again, that is a safety issue, uh, you know, this morning, we saw the kids, I don't think we have Francis here today, but we saw the kids out walking to their bus stops, and those clear sidewalks really aid in that. And we do have a lot of people, we of course, uh, you know, council has long promoted, uh, having a walkable community, and having those sidewalks accessible are certainly, uh, an important part of our community. So we, we appreciate the citizens' cooperation, along with the city, to try to clean up when we have these snow events. Uh, before I get to the last item, which the mayor alluded to, uh, saying a few words about my colleague, Tom Sanderson, I do want to request, uh, an executive session at the end of the meeting, if we could please, to discuss litigation. Uh, no action is anticipated coming after that session. So, in, uh, my last item is to move on to the Fire Division and to talk a little bit about Chief Sanderson, uh, who has been a wonderful and amazing colleague, has been an outstanding fire chief, and has had a long and successful career here with the city of Bowling Green. Three and a half years ago, Tom became our fire chief, um, continuing through the tradition of a qualified and quality leaders at the Fire Division. But Tom, in his time, really proved to be quite the agent of change. Uh, I've been in this position about two and a half years, and it wasn't long before I had Tom Sanderson in my office advocating for these many changes uh, that he had researched, that he was promoting, that he was really encouraging the Fire Division. And that was for the safety of our firefighters, the safety of our community, to improve efficiency and effectiveness of the Fire Division. And in that, he has accomplished so very much in his time as chief. Uh, I wouldn't have time to name them all, but there are a few highlights I would like to point out. Tom, in his time as chief, has improved the communications within, between the Fire Division and other city staff members. He's also improved the communication of the commu- with the community. He's really opened the doors to the Fire Division and ensured that all ages have access to information, to education, and has made that division very accessible. He has been an important and trustworthy coworker. He is someone that will participate in problem-solving, that will take on a challenge, that can take criticism well and, and turn a problem around and, and look for solutions, and, and that's the kind of person that's just a joy to work with, because no matter what's thrown at you, you know that he is willing to, to work through it. Always an advocate for firefighters, uh, firefighter safety, firefighter improvement, uh, he, he pushed his employees to be the best that they could be and to continue again this long tradition. He also challenged the status quo. We, the Fire Division has been around a long time, and he wasn't afraid to look, to look at the processes. He was open to change, and change he implemented. Among them were changes at Bowling Green State University, where we have reduced the number of calls over there significantly to false alarms. Uh, those are responses to false alarms, uh, of course, we're, we're still responding, don't worry. He implemented a community risk reduction program, which has been a massive undertaking. He also, uh, spearheaded changes in dispatch, uh, and worked cooperatively with our Police Division in changing the way that we dispatch our, our public safety officers, and that has been a, a very significant and long-term, multi-year change over. And he also, under his leadership, we accomplished accreditation for the Fire Division and have, have maintained those very important standards. In sum, the impact of his work will be felt at the Fire Division and this community for many years to come. And so with that, I'd just like to say, Tom, thank you for being a wonderful fire chief. We will certainly miss him. And that completes my report, subject to your questions.
Thank you, are there questions for Lori?
Uh, Lori, in terms of snow events, would you, how many cars would you estimate get towed on a typical event?
It really just depends, and the only time we would do any towing would be in an actual declared snow emergency, unless someone was parked in a place that was hindering our operation. So I don't know if, if Tony, if we have an estimate for, for this year. We've only actually had one official declared snow emergency. A lot of the storms have been right at that two-inch mark, and so sometimes, you know, depending on where you live in town, you might be at 2.1 and on the other side of town at 1.9, so we've had a lot of those. But I, I think, and, and Brian Kraft, you know, your folks are the ones out there, you know, we're seeing cooperation, but there are certainly some pockets that, you know, still need to, to get in compliance, um, with that, but we've learned that in years when we have a lot of snow, we get more compliance because people start to get used to us. We, these last two years, we didn't have, fortunately, a lot of snow, so people had kind of gotten out of it, but we're just always pushing that communication to folks, so please, anything you can do to, to remind them of that, it really does, does help us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chief Sanderson, on behalf of city council, I would also like to add our, uh, congratulations on your tenure retirement, and also express our appreciation for your many efforts throughout your career, um, you know, in the, in the Fire Department. Um, we certainly are, are very appreciative and thankful for your service to our community, and we wish you well in your retirement. Thank you very much. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Good evening and Happy New Year. I want to echo Lori's comments, he is a wonderful coworker, and I really appreciate all you do. Tom, if we have a site plan, he would literally teleport himself into my office a second later and pick them up and get back to us the same day, and it's just really amazing to have a coworker like that. He also promised he would come back and talk at the Ohio Town and Gown Conference that we're holding on campus. I thought I'd get that in the minutes, Tom, if you don't mind. But we do really appreciate that, just shows that he's not cutting ties with the community, he really is a, a long-time supporter and here for the long haul, so, thank you, Tom. Um, want to let you know I'm working on a brief summary of the Plan Department for the year that I will email to you once that's done. I thought it was interesting, we literally landed on 362 permits for the year, same exact as last year in 2016, or the year before, so I thought that was interesting that we had the exact same number of permits. Um, we also are holding a joint city council plan commission meeting on Wednesday, February 28th at 6:00 p.m. at the Wood County Courthouse. That will be the last visit from Camero's, that will present the community action plan, so it's really important. We wanted to give the public and you all a, um, a good lead time on that to be able to clear your schedule and attend. We really think the courthouse has been so helpful to us in having meetings there, and it, it's just a wonderful venue. We really want to highlight that historic, important building in that community and that neighborhood. Um, so we'll probably have a task force meeting also that day that will get out to them too. So really important, the last visit, that really shows that we're on a, really the ninth hour of that plan, and your input's really important. So more information to come on that, and, um, Not in Our Town Bowling Green, just mark your calendars, Tuesday, April 3rd of this year, obviously, is the Fourth Annual Interfaith Breakfast, Junior Fair Building, um, looking at the same timeframe, about 7:00, 7:15 for breakfast to start, and there'll be more information about that to come, but I know you all get so busy, so we want to get that on your calendar. Along with the fifth year for Not in Our Town, our anniversary will be on April 17th. We do not have that really solidified yet, but again, you all are so busy, I want to make sure that you really acknowledge that that's coming up, and we would love to see you all there if you can attend. That was it. Any questions?
Questions for Heather. Thank you very much, Heather. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Um, lots going on, mostly inside at the parks, um, due to the weather. Uh, but, uh, highlight just a few items, um, the 12th Annual, can't believe it's the 12th Annual, but Brown Bag Music Series is kicking off this Friday. Uh, that is a tremendous partnership with the College of Musical Arts at, uh, BGSU. We provide the building, they provide all the awesome talent. Um, so, uh, performances are at 12:15, we'll have seven of those throughout January and April this year, ranging in the type of, uh, musical performance. Um, uh, performances are at 12:15, people are welcome to come anytime after 11:45 and have their lunch. We do have drinks and dessert available for a donation, um, but you do need to bring your own lunch. Um, so last week, the Bowling Green Community Foundation awarded, uh, several grants, which was really cool to be there for that. Um, but the reason I bring that up is I do want to mention that, um, one of those, uh, grant projects, um, will start Phase Two of the Community Mosaic. If you recall, uh, we got some grant money in 2016, um, finished and installed that project last spring in 2017, and the minute it was installed and, and we had the ribbon-cutting, everybody said, "Oh, my gosh, this is so wonderful. When are you going to do those windows over there?" And it was like, "Oh, my gosh, seriously, just take a moment and look at this beautifulness." But, um, but it's a great problem to have, uh, so we are starting Phase Two. Um, and so here is some information on that, um, and there, there may, there, there won't be quite as much of the education component with that, um, but definitely the community involvement with groups putting together the, the mosaics and sort of making them, and then having it up at the community center is just, just a great tie-in, um, because the community made it, and then it's up at the community center. Um, and it helps to, uh, cut down some of the glare on, on those windows there and just really, uh, give some kind of cool art, um, out there. Um, and a couple of other things, um, I would be remiss if I did not mention, um, on Wendy Chambers' behalf, uh, that the Winter Fest, uh, BG Celebration, the coolest weekend of the year, is coming up, February 9th, 10th, and 11th. Um, so there is a flyer on all of the, uh, activities, um, sort of the overview. Can't list everything, but it's all over town, lots of different groups putting things on. Um, and specifically for Parks and Recreation, we will- And specifically for Parks and Recreation, we will, once again, be having our Frostbite One Mile Fun Run. The goal is to not actually give people frostbite, but hopefully it'll be a little warmer than today, but not so warm that the sculptures are melting that weekend. So your New Year's resolutions, you can train to be able to do a mile in a couple weeks if you haven't already been training, it's fine. You can also walk. So, but just kind of a cool thing to get people out and outside and enjoying what we have here in northwest Ohio. And last but not least, in 2018, the Parks and Recreation Board has decided to move their meetings around. If some, a lot of you recall, we used to do that, which is fantastic, because we have board members that really like one park or like another park, and that's what they're familiar with. So to get them out and around, to experience all of our facilities and parks is a great thing. However, they have to remember where the meetings are. So that's why I want to mention that, so don't always assume if you're planning on coming, they're the most fun commission, in my opinion. Although bike safety is a lot of fun, we just finished next door there. Make sure you look as to where it is. So next week, if you're planning on coming, we're kicking off the year at the community center, and then it'll sort of rotate around. We won't be out in shelters until we get to warm, guaranteed warm weather. But that whole listing is on the website, under the Parks and Recreation Board, so you can just click on that and look at that. That's all that I have, unless you have questions of me.
Questions for Kristen.
Thanks.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
I don't recall mentioning it in previous meetings, but you may notice some construction activities out at the wastewater treatment plant. That work is the headworks improvement project. It's going to improve our grit removal process and some fine screens at a new building out there. So that'll be ongoing throughout most of 2018. There are still out there working through this weather, but obviously, production's a little bit slow right now. The odor control project out at the wastewater plant, we had hoped to finish that up at the end of 2017, but weather went south on us, and they can't do some of the work below a certain temperature. So in the spring, when the weather gets back to better temperatures, they'll get back and complete that project early on. Last thing really is just that with the cold weather, we've had very few electric outages and very few water breaks. And as we know, from different seasons, cold weather can cause all those issues to occur. So we've been pretty fortunate this year that we haven't seen a lot of those happen. Yes, thank you. All of you can knock if you'd like. That's all I have.
Questions for Brian.
Is part of that because it seems like it's less windy? I mean, I remember years it just seemed incredibly cold, but more windy perhaps.
The snow cover does provide a little bit of a blanket, so to speak, so the freeze doesn't quite get as deep when there's snow cover. If the snow was gone and we had a deep freeze, that tends to provide more water breaks. But when we have some snow cover, it, we don't quite have it as bad. We've had some mild winters in the past year or so, but back in 2014 when we had the polar vortex blow through, we did have several water breaks in that situation, but that was a long duration of, you know, zero or below zero temperatures, and you're going to experience that. So even though we have been, you know, below 20s and maybe in the single digits here for a few weeks, we haven't stopped and seen those same issues pop up.
Thanks. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
Last week was supposed to have been the start of our Christmas tree collection, and we had two days that were piling snow instead. So if you stub your trees with the curb, leave them there, we'll come get them. Probably get them finished up this week. I want to give an update on the crosswalks on East Wuster. If anybody's been through the corridor pretty much from Mannville out to the Stro Center, you see some of those refuge islands in the middle. They're complete, the orange barrels are just kind of still there to let people know they're there. Things yet to do are two major things. One out by the Stro Center, we'll get the, what we call the pedestrian hybrid beacon, and the one in the middle, kind of by University Lane, just west of the Health Center, we'll also get a pedestrian hybrid beacon. And those are those signals that when somebody comes up to cross the street, they push the button, stops traffic and gets them across. A few weeks ago, the word I got was they're still looking at February, March to install those, so delivery time. So we have yet to finish that portion, and that would be complete. But if you see people crossing through there, just keep a heads up for them. We're trying to get them used to using those locations to help not only themselves, but the motorists, so they're comfortable with where you're used to seeing the pedestrian, and get them to cross at those spots that were targeted as the most advantageous to get across the street safely. So that's an update on that. And I guess last but not least, I'll do the same thing. Thanks, Tom. Been a great partner with Public Works and the fire department, both on, doesn't matter whether it's a facility thing or a project, anything goes along, Tom has been A1 to work with, and I look forward to having him be a employee at Public Works maybe in the summer or two. So that's my report, and if there's any questions, it's me.
Other questions for Brian.
Brian, noticed some of the new sheros are taken and beaten. Do we have a plan for that?
Well, those are put down with thermoplastic, and anytime you put something that's, I'll say, in the middle of the driving lane, the blade, and they don't mix too well. Not that you don't have crosswalks or stop bars or channelizing lines on the pavement, those are usually thicker, and I would say they grab a hold of the pavement a little bit better. These being so thin, they pop off easy. And so we're going to have to probably go out and restripe those with paint, because we're pretty confident if you put the thermoplastic back down in pieces, it'll just come right back off. So that's the downside of that. But yeah, we've seen that, and the only thing to do would be to pick up the blade, and then if you pick up the blade, you're leaving snow and ice on the road, so it's a challenge.
Thank you, Brian. Yep. Great work on the snow removal, too. That completes our official reports. We move forward with the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinett.
I have a resolution from the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee authorizing City Attorney to petition the Board of County Commissioners of Wood County, Ohio, to change council plan.
Thank you, Greg. I have two resolutions from the Committee of the Whole. A resolution honoring Robert McComber, member of the Council of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, and also a resolution honoring Scott Seelager, member of the Council of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
In the Finance Committee, I have a resolution transferring previously appropriated funds. I have an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for sidewalk improvements, pavement striping, deicing salt, and improving streets, alleys, and other public ways in the city of Bowling Green, Ohio. I have an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in state of Ohio or federal purchasing programs for the purchase of vehicles and equipment, as well as the trade-in or outright sale of vehicles and equipment being replaced and or no longer needed for municipal purposes and declaring an emergency. An ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to enter into a contract or contracts with specified vendors for work that may exceed $50,000 annually for calendar year 2018. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.01A, G, and N, Section 33.20G, and Section 33.39, and abolishing Section 33.41 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding employment practices. An ordinance authorizing an agreement between the city of Bowling Green, Ohio and the Wood County Regional Airport Authority. Finally, an ordinance amending and adopting Section 95A.07C1 and Section 95A.10C3, and creating Sections 95A.80 through 95A.95 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding income tax regulations and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Bruce.
Mr. President.
Mr. Zanfordino.
We have two resolutions from the Transportation and Safety Committee. The first resolution is a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio to file a capital and operating plan for the years 2018 through 2021 with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other-than-urbanized areas. We also have a resolution adopting and authorizing an amended BG transit drug and alcohol testing policy.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
From the Community Improvement Committee, I have a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio to file an application and execute a contract upon grant application approval under the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program as authorized by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended. And I have an ordinance amending and adopting changes to Chapter 94 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding garbage and litter.
Thank you, Daniel. Do we have any council committee reports this evening? Very good. Kay, we move forward to the reading of legislation.
Mr. Manin.
While we're waiting, I'll take advantage of this opportunity under council committee reports to report something I was going to report earlier, but as has been alluded to earlier in this meeting, on Saturday, January 18th at 9:00 AM, council is going to meet...
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, yeah, January 20th, which is a week from Saturday, at 9:00 AM, City Council is going to meet along with the city administration in these chambers to have our annual strategic planning session. As mentioned, that will begin at 9 o'clock, and we're very much looking forward to that process.
And that's this Saturday, is that right, Mr. President?
This Saturday. I'm way off. Yeah, thanks for reminding.
It isn't 9.
Yeah, it isn't 9.
AM, that would be AM.
Right, see y'all Saturday, I'll be there. Thank you for that correction.
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3692 for first reading. Resolution honoring Robert McComber, member of the Council of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
I move to suspend the rules and give Resolution 3692 at second and third reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the rule?
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3692 is approved.
Resolution number 3693 for first reading. Resolution honoring Scott Seelager, member of the Council of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
I move to approve Resolution 3692.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the rule?
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3692 is approved.
Resolution number 3693 for first reading. Resolution honoring Scott Seelager, member of the Council of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
I move to suspend the rules and give Resolution 3693 at second and third reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the rule?
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3693.
Resolution number 3693 for second and third reading. Resolution honoring Scott Seelager, member of the Council of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
I move to approve Resolution 3693.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the rule?
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
The motion is approved. Resolution 3693 is approved.
Resolution number 3694 for first reading. Resolution authorizing the city attorney to petition the Board of Commissioners of Wood County, Ohio to change township lines. Resolution number 3695 for first reading. Resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I'd like to give, suspend the rules and give Resolution 3694 at second and third reading.
Second.
3695.
Yes, 3695.
Thank you.
Yes. Kay, would you please call the rule?
Someone second it?
Yes, second.
Okay, thank you. Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3695.
Resolution number 3695 for second and third reading. Resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President.
Jeffers.
I move to adopt Resolution 3695.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the rule?
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3695 is approved.
Resolution number 3696 for first reading. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio to file an application and execute a contract upon grant application approval under the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program as authorized by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended. Resolution number 3697 for first reading. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio to file a capital and operating plan for the years 2018 through 2021 with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other-than-urbanized areas. Resolution number 3698 for first reading. Resolution adopting and authorizing an amended BG transit drug and alcohol testing policy. Ordinance number 8655 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for sidewalk improvements, pavement striping, deicing salt, and improving streets, alleys, and other public ways in the city of Bowling Green, Ohio. Ordinance number 8656 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in state of Ohio or federal purchasing programs for the purchase of vehicles and equipment, as well as the trade-in or outright sale of vehicles and equipment being replaced and/or no longer needed for municipal purposes and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 8657 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to enter into a contract or contracts with specified vendors for work that may exceed $50,000 annually for calendar year 2018. Ordinance number 8658 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.01A, G, and N, Section 33.20G, and Section 33.39, and abolishing Section 33.41 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding employment policies. Ordinance number 8659 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing an agreement between the city of Bowling Green, Ohio and the Wood County Regional Airport Authority. Ordinance number 8660 for first reading. Ordinance number 8660 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 95A.07C1 and Section 95A.10C3, and creating Sections 95A.80 through 95A.95 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding income tax regulations and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 8661 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting changes to Chapter 94 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding garbage and litter. And there is no legislation for second or third reading.
Thank you, Kay. That completes the items on our agenda this evening. Is there any other business to come before council?
I'd like to ask one question. This might go to the tax commissioner or directed to Lori. Do you have an estimate of how much changes in the way we're going to collect income tax, you know, by way of transferring some of the collection process to the state? And then some of the other things I was reading about in the report, I'm not real clear on the impacts of that. Do you have an estimate of how much money this is going to cost us
Thank you. It depends on how many businesses are opting into the state collection. It's an optional provision so far. The other part is, there is a pending legal challenge going on at the state. If that injunction comes forward and is granted, then it won't have any impact. But it's a half percent of the collections we would get through the state. So far, we have received about six or seven businesses that have opted in. This is a period of time where they can choose to tell the state of Ohio and us, the municipality, that they want to do that. They have until the end of February to, or end of February to complete that. Our business collections last year were around $3 million. I think a half percent of that, if every single one chose to do that, which they won't, so it's a few thousand dollars that could be one way to go.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Rob. Any other items for discussion? Seeing none, at the request of Mr. Tretter, I would accept a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss a pending legal matter.
So moved.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the rule?
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
The motion passes. We are adjourned to executive session, where we are not expected to take any action this evening. Thank you all very much.